Nick Orbell.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to our submission again this year. And, most importantly, to thank councillors through the community committee for the support that has been given to the South Dunedin Street Festival. I begin with that because it's enormously appreciated, but also because it presents a picture of the value of targeted investment in South Dunedin. I think you've probably already heard during these submissions something of the anomaly, for lack of a better word, that is South Dunedin in the annual planning, but we've drawn attention to that in our submission and provided you with some statistics. We do not consider that South Dunedin can simply be treated as part of average Dunedin. There are unique features about the South Dunedin communities and we submit that it's appropriate and cost-effective and indeed not particularly controversial for council to invest in South Dunedin and the rewards and the benefits of doing so are evident, in particular with the Street Festival. So what's the next piece of targeted investment that would be desirable? We submit that it's the library, the library, the library, the library. I note, looking back through my own notes, and I'm not sure if Anne Turvey is speaking to you later on.
She's already spoken.
She's already spoken, okay. Well then, she will no doubt have reminded you that in 1989 the St Kilda Borough was merged into the Dunedin City Council with the promise of an upgrade to the library facilities in that part of town. I know that Anne has submitted, and she's been already, that's 25 years of her submissions, towards that end. It's time that that cap in hand begging from perhaps a somewhat inarticulate community was put to one side and council recognised what I believe is a moral responsive, moral imperative to act in an appropriate way to improve conditions, to facilitate change in that community and not allow yourselves to be seduced by attractive new projects that have popped up with monotonous regularity over that 25-year period. So we're urging that you don't actually wait till 2016 before commencing the spend. We would like to see you bring the spend forward to this year and the capital spend accordingly forward another year as well. We note that the current budget figures are a saving of around about 40% on the original projections which were scheduled into the long-term capital expenditure of council, so it's not such a burden as it once was and we strong, I think you've already heard from Laura Black in the Methodist Mission about the positive social benefit accruing to a community from just the very presence of a municipal library in a community. The report that you received in January talks about the changing use of libraries in communities and raises the access to information and gathering point components which are a strong feature of the community complex as it's currently envisaged. Again, you probably don't need reminding, but South Dunedin has an incredibly disproportionately low uptake still of internet access and the current census data, it is up considerably from last time, but it's still, it's still well behind the rest of the city and, of course, I can't lay my hand on the percentage, there it goes. The city's access to internet is about just under 80%, 78% of the city has home access to internet, in South Dunedin, 48%. So, one of the dreams of the community facility in South Dunedin, the community complex, is to enable better access to information, better access to information technology and a better chance of people taking opportunities as they arise to take up learning opportunities. Yeah. So, of course, that is our key submission and we urge you to continue it. A small rider with that which we have in our submission is to increase the funding support for the Gigaton project and we urge that some of that also is directed towards a community complex uptake of access to information along the same lines. Moving on through our submission, talking about economic development, again, my erstwhile colleague Laura Black brought your attention to the lack of discussion of economic development. We have urged for several years in these submissions for council to adopt South Dunedin as a priority area for targeted investment. Already spoken of the benefits of the Street Festival, we're not necessarily talking enormous money, but we would like you and your staff to have a conscious focus on how investment might change the picture. There's been a long-term target within council, council has set in terms of wellbeing to lift the average income and we've always argued that in fact what's needed, particularly in terms of South Dunedin residents, is to lift the median so that more people are receiving better incomes. Again, you're probably only too aware that in South Dunedin, almost half the residents are on an income of less than $20,000. So targeted investment, supporting the revitalisation projects wherever they're needed, in areas of the city that are getting run down, it's good investment to support revitalisation. Moving through in terms of the connectedness, there's a perennial issue in South Dunedin which I would be remiss if I didn't raise during this presentation around parking in South Dunedin. We have enjoyed good relationships with your staff and have seen an increase in enforcement of the parking as is currently configured. We are urging for an increase in the amount of regulated parking, I think we, the Business Association, are still very much of the view that free parking is one of the drawcards that brings shoppers to South Dunedin, although the tighter the parking remains, the more we are debating that internally and one of the things that perhaps might be a... In our submission, we suggested that there is a review of parking solutions, which I think, again, is part of the work programme for the whole city, but when the community complex goes ahead, there will be even more demand on parking and there is some urgency in considering increased off-street parking. One of the revitalisation plans had indicated that off-street parking in Glasgow Street was a possible negotiation point with landlords. That or maybe even a parking building in the present parking site in Rangakaile Street would be worth considering. We've spoken already about the Street Festival and, again, I have to declare a vested interest as the festival coordinator, but it has a proven success and we seek ongoing support. It's not in the current plan, but I'm conscious that there's been some discussion of a mid-tier event funding bracket. Council's support of the festival is limited to the $5,000 community grant ceiling at the moment for the two partner organisations that seek funding and the festival would be on a much more secure and stable footing if it were able to qualify for a mid-tier bracket should that eventuate. We believe, we believe it should be an annual event, we believe it's a genuine community celebration and we'd just love to see it well supported by council, so please consider that next tier of funding. And finally, a little nod towards the curbside recycling project which is being investigated for expansion, we've submitted on that over the last couple of years. There is a level of residential population in the South Dunedin retail area, not very high, but also the retailers also have large quantities of cardboard, there is a cardboard collection, but they're also embarrassed by the amount of perfectly recyclable material that they send to landfill at present, so I encourage you to continue with that exploration of inner-city curbside, or what did you call it, central business area, is it, in the current parlance? Explore that project. Thank you for your time.
Councillor's questions, councillor Wiley.
Thank you for that. We've had one submission or group, Gasworks, talking about the South Dunedin hub or community centre not necessarily being in Prince Edward Street. Do you think that's a deal breaker, do you think it needs to be on the main street?
It's hard to give anything other than a personal opinion, we certainly haven't discussed it. I'm aware that, and I've been involved in dialogue with library planning over quite a considerable period, probably a decade, and the, as I understand it, the library staff have always been very keen for it to be very centrally relocated. A further outlocation, I mean, again, South Dunedin, people are known for their low vehicle ownership. At the same time, the proposed community complex has a large vehicle catchment area sited close to Feeder Roads from Otago Peninsula, the Southern Motorway and so on, it's all part of the mass of likely users for a library slash community complex. So car parking is imperative and I guess a slightly more distant location would be better from that point of view, but the local community don't live near the Gasworks. I think the Caledonian census block has one or no households in it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. I was going to ask about location too because it's pretty vital, but the association doesn't have a position on that.
We don't have a position. I think a central location is good for the vibrancy that it brings. I mean, part of the point of the community complex is to increase the sense that the retail area is a nice place to be, there's a purpose for being there and there are things that are worth doing when you are there. So I think a central location is very wide. Just in passing, point out that there's a nearly empty mall on Coggo's Corner.
Okay, and just in terms of, could you just sort of list the functions and services that you would see valuable, you've got community complex and library is the way you describe this and...
Well, if I can draw on your own report.
So you support what we've talked about up till now?
Well, I'm noting that at the South Dunedin Street Festival, there was a straw poll of passing bodies and that the library itself was the top of the polling there, closely followed by the internet use. A youth hub picked up the next ranking lot of votes, I'm not young anymore, it's hard for me to say, but I guess positive places for young people to spend time are always worth considering and there's a perennial issue with toileting in South Dunedin, so that's a bonus, but I think, I think the list that your staff have put together of possibilities is a pretty sound list.
Would include meeting rooms or for organisations?
Yeah, the Levin model of, to Takaere, I'd encourage you to visit their website if you want to look at the possibilities of a community complex, incorporating a library if you haven't done so already.
Thank you.
Nick, I see you're seeking further funding for your street festival. Have you an expectation that council will take that on board today and discuss it and increase your funding, or have you made an application through our events funding? You have, you've been receiving funds from the...
Yes, we have.
You have, okay.
The two partner groups for the Street Festival are South Dunedin Voice and this year a specific Street Festival committee is formed from that group and the Business Association.
So you will...
Both those groups have applied for funding
Okay.
From the community grants process, but my point was that those grants have a $5,000 ceiling on them and even combined, that doesn't really cover the costs of mounting a festival these days.
I was just trying to clarify that point.
No, in the future, we'd be very happy to make a larger application if there was a larger tier we could apply to.
Well, on the basis of the success of your festival, you should try harder.
Wondering, the festival, what is the operating cost of that festival every year? Do you know, off the top of your, if not, no worries?
I think last year we brought it in just under $14,000.
Thank you.
Our budget is a little higher this year and as always, we will tailor our cloth to suit the resource available.
Thanks.
As good stewards of community funds.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name's Carmel Leslie, I'm the Coaching Director and a Committee Member at the Dunedin Gymnastic Academy. DGA have been working with council staff since 2012 on our plan to develop a regional hub for gym sports in Otago. We are now at the stage where we have contracted Signal Management Group to complete a feasibility study for our proposed multi-sport facility on the grounds of Logan Park High School. During this time, we've done due diligence and explored alternative sites and assessed numerous commercial sites. This site, we believe, is our best choice to date for developing this facility. We have received support from all other Dunedin gym sports clubs and have wide support from other Otago clubs as well as clubs in South Canterbury and in the Coggo. We already have numerous non-gym sports organisations using our facilities and since we've had this development, we've had interest from other groups as well who would like to use the space that has been created. We believe that this facility will be a community asset, its primary use is community sport and recreation, and it will assist with increasing active participation in sport and recreation activities unlike many professional sport developments which really only make the community into spectators. We've reached our capacity in 2013 for the number of children that we can support in our existing facilities and have waiting lists in our trampoline, gym floor and parkour programmes and our women's artistic gymnastics programme is full and cannot accommodate any more gymnasts. This facility is actually needed now, it is something not needed for big events sometime in the future. Our development strategy last year focused on taking gym sports out to the community. We developed and run a satellite club in Wekoa Eti and we have adopted a gym and schools programme called Move and Improve that takes gymnastics out to the schools. We will continue to look at developing more of these programmes in 2015, but as it stands, we cannot increase our core services in our existing facilities anymore. While gym sports is little seen and regarded as a minority sport, in actual fact, over more than 194,000 people in New Zealand participate in gym sport activities in 2015. Gym sports is about developing fundamental movement patterns that are common to every sport in New Zealand, for this reason, gym sports is one of the sport New Zealand's targeted sports. We ask that council seriously consider our proposal to use money from any sale of the Caledonian Gymnasium and/or the sale of the Caledonian Bowling Club and support this project. We currently as a club have over 560 members, in turn one, we had 1,251 people come through our facility and foot traffic over the year through our four facilities is around 125,000. It is, a very big positive of our organisation is the education that we provide and the students that actually come on board as coaches and give back to this community, so yeah, that's all from me, thank you.
I can open up questions if that's okay with you, councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, I'm just trying to figure out where you're, there seems to be the assumption in your submission that the Caledonian Gymnasium is for sale. Where did you get that assumption from?
We know from looking at an unredacted copy of the proposal to sell the Caledonian Bowling Club, that council was considering this, it was actually stated in there.
Because it was presented as a, as an option in a staff report?
Yes, that's right.
Would it please you to know that that isn't the case?
Um...
Or not?
Maybe not, yes.
Well, yeah. Yeah, Caledonian Gymnasium is not on any surplus assets sales list, it has never been and council do not have it in any plans on our radar, to quote our property team, so just thought I'd relay that to you.
Thank you.
Yes, although would you also be aware that the councillor's view on that matter is not necessarily for all time, for the rest of time, et cetera?
Thank you.
Thank you. Look, my question's more around the legalities around the land. I'm conscious of the fact that, well, I'm not sure, is the, would the land be transferred to you from the school or would the land be retained in the school's ownership?
It'd be retained in the ministry's ownership
In the ministry's ownership.
And we'll have a long-term lease.
So, I just, part of the reason I asked the question is, there's been a bit of discussion lately around whether or not we, you know, there's a possibility that a secondary school might close and I'm not advocating that, but if it were, I mean, who knows what it might be and I just wasn't sure what that might mean in terms of the legalities, if you were occupying a site that became surplus to requirements and then might be up for sale by the ministry, is that something that you've established that you would have security?
Our conversation with the ministry is that they would support this development as long as there was a benefit to the school and the local school community and they are willing to look at a 21-year lease, so there would be some security over that time. They also say that this facility may also support the retention of Logan Park.
Okay. And it, given that you may have to have borrowings on this facility, I don't know what your plan is, but would a 21-year lease satisfy a bank in these circumstances?
That's, when we talked to the ministry about that, they said that's their standard term for a lease, they may consider a longer term lease, but that would be something that would have to be negotiated.
Okay. And my third question, you've said that, you know, one of the goals is to establish a capital cost, I don't know whether you have some sense in your mind at this point in time as to what that might be and clearly that would be finalised by further work, but do you have a sense?
It's definitely a significant project, the feasibility study will establish that, that we were, at this stage, we're thinking it's probably more than six million.
You can't put water on it as well by any chance, can you?
Transport it to Moscow.
Yeah.
Further questions, councillors?
Just thank you for the work you've done, I'm curious about when this feasibility might be expected to draw to a close.
The timeframe is three months and it began beginning of this month.
Okay, so we're talking July, August?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, it's a privilege to be here and be able to present my views and I do consider it a real privilege to be here. I'd first of all like to just clarify something, on my submission, it said I was in favour of scrapping the stadium, I'm not, there was an issue with the form that once you entered something, you couldn't re-enter it. Basically, just to clarify, I'm not in favour of scrapping the stadium, but I think we should do something similar to what Edinburgh does and puts on a two or three-month festival, potentially in the wintertime, when we can use it and bring money and income into the town. I also do support the community sports facility in Moskew and also spending money for the museum, that's the presentation there, yep. Now, I'm here to present about the South Dunedin Community Complex, if you've read my submission, there was an interesting video in amongst that, there was a lady talking about, from the States, about, she's a librarian over there and basically, there's a little boy that came in and briefed, he wanted somewhere to put on a show, so she gave him a show and eventually she, it was in the library, eventually she found out that the boy was homeless and that was the only place he had to go. Now, I've lived in Dunedin a fair chunk of my life and I've always, when I lived in South Otago, Dunedin, and my grandfather's shop, which was the Wolfenden Russell shop begun by my great-grandfather in 1911, was always the place that we went. I've had an interest in it right from an early child, going to that place, and the last year when Wolfenden Russell closed, I managed to market there and it was, it was an unusual thing for me as an architect to be sweeping the street out the front and connecting with the people. What I found though is South Dunedin has got a real need, it's an area that is different to the main part of Dunedin, but it's got a lot of needy people, it's a busy area, there's lots and lots of people there, but it's a busy area and what we've got up here is a picture, before Wolfenden Russell store started in 1910 or so, once the street was widened, that's my grandfather standing on the right and that's the picture of my great grandfather standing there, my great-grandfather and my grandfather Ted Wolfenden who retired out of the store in 1984. Now, if we just... So basically Wolfenden Russell began and it was, it grew as a, there was a need for a grocery store and it grew and by late 1920s, it was a really busy store, it was known as a busy, big department store in South Dunedin. By the 30s, there was a fire in 1933 and there was literally, well, you can see the staff there, there was many, many staff and I'm sure many of you have probably got family connections to the staff and that there. As time went on, the store declined, my father got out of it in 1984. I was involved in a scheme in about the year 2000, it was called Kingsgate Shopping Centre. Basically, what it involved was looking at amalgamating a lot of the bits of land and providing some, keeping King Edward Street as it is, but providing some large-scale retail space in behind it. That was before Countdown had been given the go-ahead and it was before the warehouse had been given a go-ahead. Council at the time weren't against it, but there was a lot of forces for keeping things in the centre of town, that's the model of it that was built, so basically on the ground floor, we had a lot of car parking on the, and the pink is smaller scale retail and then the other, the other plan on the right side of it is the large-scale retail and more retail, so it would have been a very similar thing to what the Meridian has got. Unfortunately, that didn't gain traction. And the last year or two, when Wolfenden Russell closed, I as an architect put my thinking cap on and thought, well, what could we do with the building? In my opinion, the building is an old building, there's a lot of social history there, but really it isn't that significant a building, so what I did is I put together a scheme and I talked to your planners and was encouraged by Glenn and some of the other planners to look at doing it. Unfortunately though, it was a little high and would have needed resource consent. The other thing about it too is that it required the entire site and that wasn't in the district plan, so I submitted for plan changes to allow the height in South Dunedin to increase. Looking at the site in South Dunedin, and I reiterate what everybody else has said, I don't need to go over that, you've heard all the stories about why we need something in South Dunedin, but I'm pleased to see that money has been allocated for a feasibility study. I believe, while the Gasworks could be a possible site, I believe that the King Edward Street really needs to be reinforced as the main retail precinct there and I believe my site is the Wolfenden Russell building, which I own outright and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but the other sites, walking through the centre-city mall building, it too would be a great building and could relatively easily be adapted to a library building, there's a nice light atrium letting light into the centre of it. Or the other, the other area that could also be used would be the Lawan Street area which has never really worked significantly as a, as a people's space, although money was spent on it, but it could, either, both buildings, either side or one of those buildings could be redeveloped into it, but my building is centrally located in the orange there, it's also got the large DCC car park to the rear of it and I also believe and have sought for some time... And I also believe, and have thought for some time, that it's, although the buildings there face King Edward Street, facing Ontarang Keela Street is also a useful connection to attract people from the shopping centre car park and the new warehouse car park. Basically, what I did was, I looked at a lot of options, just at different façade configurations and things, different studies here and there. What I did, at the time, I also approached council, and about a year ago, I produced some options for redeveloping the building. At that stage, there was an emphasis on retaining the historic façade. So the first option, which would have cost $1.9 million, including the purchase of the land, would have been to alter the building and done some additions on to it. That's just some more façade studies. A wee bit out of line there, sorry. The first option was $1.4 million, including the purchase of the land and the building, which would have been a building the council could have owned. Second option for $1.7 million would have been a bit more development. And that went right up to, at the time, to a building, it would have been about $3.8 million, which would have virtually been rebuilding the building, it could have kept some façades on it, but that was a year ago. It was, I'm not quite sure what happened, that didn't get presented to you all. This year, though, I've been in touch with Callum Stewart and got some figures on it today, and the, effectively, a building of 735 square metres net, on two levels of it, could be developed, including the purchase cost, for a cost of about $4.1 million. That could be the purchase outright, that includes the purchase of the land, professional fees, everything. Alternatively, I could develop it and lease it to you for about $390,000 a year net. And that's what I've got to say.
Questions, councillors? councillor Calvin.
I find some of these quite exciting. I don't consider them reusing a heritage building. I don't see particularly we need to be reusing a heritage building, because the pressing need is a community, whatever we're calling it, in South Dunedin, but I feel very uncomfortable with the idea of getting this far down the track with a proposal from one commercial ratepayer without giving a reasonable opportunity for others to. Are you comfortable at all with the idea, if that's the amount of square metres you think you've sorted out with Glenn, or whoever you've sorted it out with, that it just gets put out to other people to see what they could do with that sort of area, and the same sort of, everything's for sale out there, in the piece of land sense, and in the building sense? Putting it out to other people and seeing what sort of competitive expressions of interest people would like to produce for the same sort of square metre inch, or?
Absolutely. I put this out there as showing, as a baseline with what could be achieved. What I don't know really is what the council requirements are. I mean, I'm not sure exactly how many square metres there is, I mean, it may not be, it may be the council doesn't need that many square metres, in which case, something smaller can be looked at. I'm not here necessarily, and I'm not necessarily pushing my building, I'm showing that there is an opportunity to develop this, and that's the sort of money that would need to be spent on it.
Are you sort of imagining, or am I not getting it, that this is a reuse of a heritage building sort of feel? Because it doesn't sort of feel to me like a reuse of a heritage building.
It could be whatever people want, and if it needed to be a reuse of a heritage building, portions of it could stay, and I'm all for telling the story of the building, but I don't believe that needs to happen in a keeping the old building and doing it up type thing. I mean, the façade of the building is quite interesting, but I could imagine that could be used within the building somewhere, so you actually get up and you're touching the building and things like that. So I'm certainly not, what I'm doing, and I may have come across wrong, I'm putting this up as an opportunity, well, this is what we can, this is what you could get for about $4 million. There are certainly other buildings, and certainly, as I said, as I walked through the Centre City building, I believe that would lend itself very easily to being redeveloped as well.
Sorry, I wasn't meaning to be at all critical that you had put forward something, and that really gets the ball rolling and gives us an idea, and thank you for your work in this regard, I was just wanting to put out there that we need to look at probably a variety before we...
Absolutely, but the other thing I should stress, too, is that I think, and I made this point in my submission, if you've read it, that Dunedin has got its lovely Victorian buildings that we've kept, the railway station, all those lovely buildings, we've developed, and Glenn has done an amazing job at the warehouse precinct and developed that, but South Dunedin has got some buildings of character, but it hasn't got the, it's not of the building stock is what the main part is, so what I would like to see is the, not necessarily the reins lifted completely, but it develops more of a modern, vibrant thing, which has never been appropriate in the main street in Dunedin, but to give us the wacky buildings that some of these other cities like Melbourne and places like that have got, so that we've got something different and unique. But we do need a commitment from council that you do think that we are worth spending the money on out there.
Lord. Yeah, look, Philip, I'm very interested in that proposal, and the question I ask is, well, just to clarify, because I'm not sure if Hillary was understanding this or not, this is a completely new rebuild you're talking.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we have been historically told by library staff that you need a special sort of a building, books are heavy and that sort of thing. This would be well and truly capable of holding a full tier of books in half, or a quarter of it, or whatever area was designated library versus whatever other uses, computer bays or social area or whatever?
Yes, definitely, so that was one thing I talked about with Peter Stewart, potentially books are quite high loads, and the ground floor would certainly be capable, that was some of the, there'd be ability to put some books in it up the top as well, but again, I'm putting this out there, I haven't got a list of the requirements of what is actually needed for the library, so that needs work through, this is a line in the sand, I guess, is a starting point.
Further questions, councillors? No? Thank you very much. John Brimble. Welcome, John.
Thank you, your worship. Councillors? Can I introduce Owen Booth, our development manager? We're aware that council has before it a whole range of recreation-related projects for their consideration, ranging from Forsyth Bar Stadium to the Hospital Physio Pool, Moskew Pool, and the University Oval. Linked to that, and based on the work that we've been carrying out over the last few years on behalf of council, based around Dunedin City's sports facilities and sports fields, it becomes apparent to us that there is a real need for the city to develop a facility strategy for the city. You are grappling with determining priorities and the respective merits of a range of projects. We're in a similar position. We get approached by a whole range of sports, seeking support for a range of projects, and neither of us, council or Sport Otago, currently have a framework that we can assess the relative merits and the benefits of these projects. You've got a number of sports who have presented independently through the long-term plan process, but we know there are a lot of other entities out there that are not part of this process, but also have projects in train. And again, how do you assess the relative merits and the priority as to where they sit? So we believe a sport and recreation facility strategy would alleviate the problems that you face as a council, and that we face as a conduit and advisory body that promotes and advocates for sport. So a sport and recreation facility strategy would provide council with a core strategic document on which to base future planning, and assist you in decisions as opposed to what really is an ad hoc reactionary approach that's taken at the moment. And I've circulated a document that's been produced by Sport New Zealand, which is active across New Zealand at the moment, where councils are working collectively to develop facility strategies at a local level, and also at a regional level. So that is the way of the future. It is about developing a framework that gives you a criteria that you can measure respective projects against, and through that, develop a process that every project is assessed against, so it brings rigor to that process. And through that, you can develop a priority list going forward. Every project that then comes before you has to go through that process, and then is either added to that long-term priority plan or not, and it will determine where it sits. Aligned with that, it then gives you some certainty in terms of your funding obligations going forward. So we would advocate that a facility strategy should be a pillar of your considerations as part of the long-term plan process that you're going through, and should be a starting point from which all sport and recreation decisions can be based on into the future. And we would offer our services and the services of Sport New Zealand to assist council staff in working towards creating that strategy. We'd also like to talk further on the sports fields' usage and charges, so I'll pass to Owen.
Yeah, so that sort of, it links into the facility strategy as a whole, I guess, what we're looking for is for, you know, a more streamlined approach to the management and usage of Dunedin City's sports fields. We know that this work, council has started on this work, so I guess what we're saying in this instance is that we want to continue to support council in that work. What we're looking for is improved maintenance, more cost-effective operational processes, better prepared, better presented, safer surfaces for our sport. And obviously, the sports fields are linked, I guess, you know, inextricably to competitive sport, to club sport within our region. And there is a, there's a common notion, I guess, in the sector at present, I just wanted to flag it, that organised competitive sport, or club sport, should I say, is in decline, it's been in the media a little bit lately. We do know that pay-for-play recreational casual sport is on the increase, but it's not actually at the expense of competitive sport. The numbers of people that are participating through our regional sports organisations as a whole does still remain on the increase. So that's obviously, that highlights the fact that it's important for us to make sure that we're managing our sports fields, you know, that we get the allocation of fields for different codes right. And there is a commitment from our major, particularly our major winter codes, to actually work together with council, and we have had some meetings of late to that effect. So it's just a matter of making sure that, you know, we're able to continue to provide competitive sport at a standard that meets the levels expected of by those codes. The other element that we just wanted to raise in that regard, links back to Logan Park, we note that in the, that the council is planning to remove the $3.08 million that is specifically allocated for the development of Logan Park from the council's 10-year capital expenditure plan. We are, we're opposed to that. I think you've heard from a number of groups that are basing or looking at projects that are based around Logan Park, or in the process of developing projects based around Logan Park. We've had all those groups in the same room together, you know, facilitated them actually talking to each other to try and get that connectivity between those groups. What's going to be required, though, if, for example, we heard from Jim Sports earlier, if that development at Logan Park goes ahead, we talk about athletics and the facilities that they're working on, obviously got University Oval and developments that are planned down there, you've got these individual groups that are all going ahead, and they understand that they need to do their own fundraising, and come up with their own funds to put into those events, to those facilities. But I guess what will be required is still amenities such as paths, plantings, car parking, all those sorts of things to actually create that connectivity amongst Logan Park. So we think it's important that that money, that $3.08, remains within the council's budget, so that when the opportunity arises, when these projects do go ahead, that there are some funds there to actually put in that infrastructure around Logan Park, to make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing, that it all links together, and you have that connectivity.
Thank you. Can I just kick off, going back to your proposal or suggestion that we need a facility strategy? I note that you mentioned that it was to streamline management and usage. Is it also about marketing Dunedin as a venue or a destination for events, knowing what you have? I've heard some sporting groups talk about it in that light as well, so I'm interested in what your perspective on that is.
If you have a facility strategy which has a clear, has clearly identified what you have, the extent of it, its utilisation, et cetera, that would form a useful part of a city-wide marketing promotion campaign. You can provide that as part of your package. At the moment, it's not there.
Yeah, John, with your, just the timeframe on putting together this strategy, what, and you offered Sport Otago's services, and that's fine, who do you see, along with Sport Otago and, so the DCC, who else would be involved in writing up that strategy? And what sort of timeframe would you envisage?
We know from our discussions and the partnership arrangement we have through Sport New Zealand that we have access to their community sport facilities team, and I know council staff have already had some contact with them over other issues, but that's a service that would be added, that would contribute. And through them, you have access to what is being carried out in other parts of New Zealand, so you're not reinventing the wheel, so we learn from others, it's a sharing mechanism.
No question. I agree with your submission with regards to the funding that had been put aside for Logan Park, that, and we've had other groups, one in particular from athletics came in and submitting on that, the demise of that particular group that was set up to look at Logan Park. I was on that group, along with two or three other councillors, and it got to the stage where there were, and there is a question in this, there were a number of conflicting sports bodies, like the Highlanders Otago Rugby, the Soccer South, and looking for rather big-ticket items. Would, as part of your strategy, look at all those issues that will be taken into consideration, so you'd be consulting with all of those sports, the 20 odd that use Logan Park?
Yeah, so at the end of last year, we had a forum down at the Saugod Centre, and we had probably close to 60 or 70 people within the forum, or with an interest in Logan Park, representatives from all those groups that you mentioned. And the concept plan that council had developed was put up on a screen, and that the actual overlap between those sports was very limited, and there was not a lot of actual conflict around where these different projects were going to be based. So that consultation, those discussions are already happening, so I'm confident that we could work our way through that.
Yes, and so, you wouldn't necessarily be an expensive exercise in setting up the initial investigation for the strategy. I mean, because, as is before, there was quite a conflict between some of these other sports, and there were big-ticket items mentioned, it's really just a case of identifying the use of the facilities and recreational facilities that we've got in the city, and writing up that strategy. So I don't see that as an expensive exercise. Would you have some idea what the cost might be?
No, not at this stage.
Yeah.
But it's not a big-ticket item, to quote you. A lot of the work's already there, in 2012, we carried out a built facilities review on behalf of council, so we know what you currently have, the state of it, who's using it, and also the maintenance requirements. So it would be working in consultation with a whole range of sports codes across the city to identify what their aspirations are, where they see their sport going, if they have particular projects they want to push forward, and we're already working with most of them. And we're doing that on behalf of council.
Councillor McTavish.
Just to, thanks, John and Owen. In relation to yours, your suggestions around a strategic approach to our sports facilities. Obviously, you guys are cognizant of the fact that we're developing a parks and recreation strategy and that it's intended that out of that, once we have that framework, there will be an open space plan and and a sports, or sports facilities, recreation facilities plan which sits alongside that. Are you comfortable that through that process, what you're seeking will be achieved?
No, I'd, I'd see the actual facilities plan being a specific part of the sport and recreation overall strategy. And Richard's nodding his head behind you.
So in that, in, in the sense that, so my understanding of our sports and, sorry, our parks and rec strategy is that it'll be a very high-level document and that we'll have two plans which sit underneath that. Is that different from what you understand?
Yep.
So.
No, no, I understand that. What we're saying is there needs to be a separate facilities strategy. Which has within a very robust process that every project that comes before council has to go through or is being presented to you.
So in terms of how that sits with our strategy, are you proposing that as effectively an assessment framework which sits alongside it? Thank you.
Councillor Calvert.
This proposal sounds really exciting to me because it seems to me, and I might be getting it wrong, that where you're going would allow us to make better decisions as to choices of money. What at the moment seems to happen is that it's likely that somebody wants cricket lights and everybody else sort of supports them because they want to be helpful because there are other sporting people and then somebody else wants artificial turf and somebody else wants a swimming pool. And everybody sort of supports each other because they, otherwise they'd be seen to not be. And then we've just got an overwhelming amount. Do you think this would help us be able to, to actually look at things and say that's got more or less priority? Not that it's not important, but for our funding?
Yes.
Yeah, it's about not looking at those decisions in isolation. So it's about looking at the collective sport and rec facilities. And if we're going to make a decision and I'll say, for example, I'll use Moorskill Pool. If we're going to make a decision around what happens out there, Egger Centre's bursting at the moment in terms of, you know, in terms of usage, particularly between 3 and 9pm in the weekdays. So we have an overflow of indoor space that's required somewhere within the city. So if we were going to look at building a new pool, and I'm, I'm not going to get into the debate of that. If we're going to look at building that out in Moorskill, then would you not look to tie that into a community hub of lots of the Moorskill Stadium out there? And perhaps look at more indoor space so we can take over, take some of that overflow? So it's just, it's not looking about individual facilities in isolation, but looking at a plant collectively.
So that sounds fabulous. Would it, would it also include the non-sporting recreation sort of users at all? Would, would you imagine that, I'm thinking people walking their dogs or, you know, other, other usage of spaces that sort of fit in?
That, that flows out of your parks and recreation overall strategy where it looks at places and spaces. So within the parks and recreation strategy, a major component of that framework which will come before you at some stage is looking at, at how you develop and promote and maintain your open spaces and encourage more physical activity and use there.
Councillor Wiley.
Thank you, John Moan. John, in your, excuse me, in your submission, you talk about sports tourism. Can you elaborate on that and the value for the city?
If you look at, without relating it to Dunedin Stadium specifically, but if you look at Dunedin as an entity, and I'll use Next Year as an example. We are attracting all four major athletics New Zealand events into Dunedin. The reason they're coming to Dunedin is that we've probably got one of the two best tracks in New Zealand. We have a, an educated volunteer workforce that mobilises itself. And we've got a city that actually embraces those events and creates a great environment for people. If you look at the city overall, over the course of a year, a hundred and ten dozen events and activities that are attracted into Dunedin. And yes, we have to continually market and promote the city. But they bring a huge amount of revenue into the city and help the economic vibrancy of the city. So from a pure economic point of view, sport and recreation based around events and activities and tournaments generates a huge amount of spend for those people coming into Dunedin.
Okay.
And the big-ticket items like, you know, your All Blacks test and your, your Black Caps matches, they're, they're the tip of the iceberg. There's lots of other events that happen at a lower level, at a secondary school, even primary school level, that attract people from around the region and they happen on a more regular basis. So it's, it's remiss of us just to focus on those big-ticket items. It's about looking at the number of other events that happen throughout the year of a lesser, to a lesser extent than actually, you know, that could turn sport tourism as well.
Hence why it's hard to even get a hotel room in the school holiday periods.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So, so it's linked to that. We think it's got to be a, a, a major plank increasingly within your overall tourism strategy. And part of that is about promoting the city and packaging its sport and recreation facilities as one of the draw cards to bring people into the city.
Okay. When you look at the fields around town, are there many that are unsuited for play or, you know, for usage?
So the current work that we're doing with council is a service level standards of DCC sports fields. So we're currently surveying all the sports codes that use those fields as to the current standard of those particular fields. So we'll have some more information on that. Preliminary work that we've done in terms of usage finds that there are sports fields out there that aren't used as much. So part of the rationalisation of that is, you know, can, can we, can we re, if we were to bring some other fields up to a certain standard, perhaps you could maybe even look at retiring some fields or turning them to reserves or, or other use. So it's just about getting the complete picture. So the current work that we're doing is looking.
Where are the schools at in relation to artificial surfaces?
There are a number of schools currently investigating and progressing projects that involve surfacing what might have been tennis courts. So they become multi-use surfaces. You have Gym Sports here, they're working with Logan Park High School, which involves resurfacing of four of their courts out at the back of the school, which will also have community use. I know Otago Boys High School are looking into the feasibility of resurfacing four of their courts in Stewart Street. There are other schools looking at providing artificial surfaces within their grounds that potentially could operate as a community hub and be accessible for local clubs and the wider community to use. And I think that, that's the way of the future too. The school partnering with the council and together saving each other money by using the schools as a hub.
Okay. So one final question. On page five of your submission, you talk about, oh, sorry, page oh, point seven about the, the lighting for the University of Otago Oval. You mentioned a number of sports that would play. So it's really not just cricket lights we're looking here at, is it?
No, we've, we've qualified our support for the, the lighting of the University Oval. It's, it's, it's one of those conundrums we find ourselves in when we're asked to, to provide support for a, a major facility upgrade. So we qualified our support based around substantial fundraising on the part of cricket. And primarily that it becomes a multi-use facility. That by providing a high-lux lit ground, and it would be the only one in Dunedin, it opens it up for use for a whole range of sports that could play their competitions there midweek and later on into a weekend. So no longer just primarily a cricket ground.
Thank you.
Councillor Thompson.
Look, I, I can absolutely see the, the need for a, a strategy that looks further out than each annual plan hearing. I'm struggling a little bit, though, but with, to reconcile that with the concern that you're also raising with regard to ground charge fees. And my, if I can explain the reason for my question. It, it seems to me that what happens at the moment is that council delivers a facility to a group of users. And there isn't any strategy in place to maintain that facility through into the long term. So what happens is eventually they come back to us and say, you know, the turf's buggered or whatever. And it seems to me that the only way that, if I tote up just the things I'm aware of from these, I can come to 20 million without any difficulty at all and 30 million at a stretch. So is it not going to be the case that there's going to have to be a greater awareness from users of the need to contribute during the lifespan? So that council is in a position to maintain those? Because otherwise, we're just going to end up saying no all over the place.
In relation to the sports fields, because I, I guess that what we've seen in our submissions around the increase for sports fields rates for 2015, 16. What, what we're saying is that until we have a better understanding around the facilities aside, until we have a better understanding around the actual use of sports fields, we're saying that we can actually probably make 2%, 2-3% of savings in terms of by not having to mark out fields for football and the same field for football and rugby in the same season, which is currently what happens in some cases. So fields have been marked out two or three times a year, which is a cost. So if we're able to better rationalise those and make, you know, this field here is purely for football for that season, that brings those costs down. So that, that's, that's, that's in terms of our, our submission about not increasing the sports fields fees. That's sort of the, the relation between those two. In terms of the actual facilities themselves, I agree, there has to be a user pays element to it.
So I, I guess what I'm hearing lurking in the back of your proposal is some kind of a service level of agreement for us to fund you doing this work. Would that be correct?
It's up to you, Ru.
Well, we, we already contracted to do work, current work with council. It's not a service level agreement, it's a contract.
Well, whatever you want to call it, you're suggesting a body of work that's not currently being done. And I'm, I'm making an assumption that there would be, you would be suggesting that there was a cost to that that would, we would be required to meet, but it's not kind of stated in your submission. So I'd love to be told I'm wrong.
I'll just go back to what I said. We offer ourselves to, to assist council in developing a facility strategy. And we can bring that resource from Sport New Zealand. I don't think it's a, it's a major cost, but yes, there is a cost. That's, that's a discussion I guess you have to have flowing from the long-term plan process that you're working through. The other part of your question in terms of maintenance, that would be picked up in the facilities plan. Because we're not just talking about providing a long-term funding plan for new facilities. What people forget about is maintaining what you have. And some of our facilities are getting to the stage where they require a reasonably substantial maintenance upgrade. And that has to be programmed in some way too.
Yeah, all right, thank you. I, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be critical. I, I think we've got a, a an increasingly pressing need. But if we just stuck those in, we could whack the rates up by 2%, just like that. More possibly.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I mean, Logan Park is already a fairly busy sports centre with the attendant capacity and congestion issues that go along with that. And now we're looking at a, a number of proposals. Gym Sports Edale, Athletics, University of Otago Oval, et cetera, which I could only assume will add to that. At one point, Football South were looking at that area for their home of football concept. They've cited the capacity and congestion issues as one of the main reasons why they've moved away from that. You know, add to that the general drift northwards of our sporting and recreational facilities, which potentially could continue with the, you know, the gym sports thing is going to potentially exacerbate that even further. Should we not be looking at decentralising our sports and recreational assets rather than trying to put all of our eggs in the Logan Park basket?
That, that will come out of the current sports field utilisation study. We're looking at the amount of utilisation of Logan Park versus perhaps a field in Porstafen versus, you know, fields out on the, on the ocean beach domain area. So.
I think the other thing to consider is, is that some of these sports that are looking at their development, for example, tennis. There's an existing footprint for tennis already down there. So if you, if you move tennis away from there, you're starting from scratch. Okay, so they, they have a home base down there. Same with the athletics. I mean, we're not going to relocate the Caledonian again. So there are some, the Logan Park High School, there's, there's obviously unused land out the back that is there that has been able to be used. The issues, I agree, in terms of congestion, there will be issues around parking and that sort of stuff. And that's something that we have to work through. That's why that 3.08 million is important. But a lot of what's we're talking about here in terms of these developments are based around existing footprints on Logan Park.
So is your advocacy for the reinclusion of that budget for the Logan Park development contingent on this work suggesting that that is indeed the best idea?
Well, what we're saying is just, just keep it in reserve, just hold on to it because we, from what we understand, athletics, I believe, might be the first cab off the rank in terms of their development. So that, that project will go ahead. We're hopeful, optimistic at least, that some of these other projects will happen as well. And we need some funds there to be able to link them up, you know, to provide, I guess, an environment that's, that looks good and that is connected.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Good to talk. Chris Arbuckle. Welcome, Chris.
I'll just get this wee PowerPoint presentation running hopefully.
DCC.
Yep. So thank you for the opportunity to present to the council. We hit this a bit flat-footed this year because we kind of left off the list. So I've got an apology from my vice president, Craig Bates, and the rest of the committee. They couldn't attend because they're all at work. And so you've just got me this, this afternoon. What I'll run through just briefly before I get on to our submission is just the type of activities that we've been doing over the past year. And then I'll just go through what we think's important. Just to remind council about the activity and the structure of mountain biking Otago. Long history, it's formed a long time ago. We've got an established committee. Just an update there, we've doubled our membership in the last year. So we're over, coming up to 300 paid members, which is a significant boost. It's really around providing more value for our membership. And people are recognising through the work we're doing, we're adding value to the mountain biking community. We're maintaining a large plant of materials like diggers, dumpers and tractors. And we're using those pretty much on a weekend basis, maintaining and building and developing our track network. We're still focused on our Three Peaks Trail. And we're still pushing towards obtaining more funding to make that trail more of a realisation. And I'll get on to that in a second. And we're still progressing our Cleghorn section of, of that trail through an easement process that's linked to the Walking Access Commission funding. So just to remind councillors of where we're playing. We have our track hubs, we call them. So we have Nichols Creek, which is just a track area, thanks. Three Peaks Trail is there in red. And we've also got Wockery Creek, Jubilee Park, Signal Hill, which is our kind of biggest track development and a key focus for the club. And it also links to a number of other activities like the Sports Hub Proposal that was presented a speaker or two ago. And we have Forrester Park and Bethune's Gully, which are areas that we use for cross-country events. So Signal Hill is our big downhill park, but we also have the So Signal Hill's our big downhill park, but we also have the Big Easy, which is a trail that goes up through it, which is easy grade for everybody to use. So over the last year, um I'd like to thank his work shift for coming along and opening the Wockery Creek Track. We did that more as a recognition of the work that community had done there. Um, it was a significant effort by the the club, but also involved a whole pile of other organisations and working with the likes of City Forest to make that track hub a reality. And we're continuing to develop it, um basically, it's a it's an ongoing process of refining the track network, making it safer for riders, walkers and their dogs, and um and also improving the car park and other facilities like a small jump park in there. We also uh gravelled a significant portion of the Signal Hill Big Easy and um spent considerable amount of time, money and effort up there over a period. Like to thank Andrew Loney and Gordon from the DCC, they've been really supportive of that project, and um we continue to work council closely on our development ideas for Signal Hill going forward, and in fact, we had a a meeting on there today about a a further track development. Um, you would have heard about the Logan Park track, uh sorry, Sports Hub development. We've been working closely with uh DGA Hockey and um and others regarding that idea of a Sports Hub. Um, we see it as win-win, mostly for our um activities associated with major events that we run on Signal Hill, and the facilities that are likely to be built there would actually improve on what we already had planned as a club. So we're already going to put in a road, um improve the access to the upper area, which would improve um the development that that access and and the site area, and we'd already planned to put in a car park, but not to the level of facilities development that's planned currently through the the Sports Hub Proposal. So we're working closely with that group and we're adding value by just progressing the road and potentially um the car park area, and if it comes a reality, that project, and we hope it does, uh we'd get better club facilities, we'd get toilets, a sealed car park, lighting and a whole pile of other things which are their value. Um, we've also been heavily involved in the South Island Cycling Project, and again, it's one of those projects where initially you think it's going to burden your group with additional things to do, but it's actually been a fantastic um initiative and well-supported by DCC. We've worked closely with Charlotte Flaherty and Rose Dovey on this project, and what we've been doing is through Scarlett Hagan's Bike School, but also just Scarlett Hayden's ability as a past um uh youth downhill champion, been providing uh m- mountain biking skills courses, like a graduation course for the students, and um they've had a fantastic time, and I've been involved in that, providing logistical support and being one of those sort of grumpy old men that kind of stands on the sidelines listening to it all. Um, what we've done from that project, and I'll talk about it in a bit more detail shortly, is we've looked to funding through the Atago Community Trust jointly with Cycling Atago to provide um a more structured mountain biking skills course for secondary schools and intermediate schools in Dunedin. Um, we'd like to thank the council for supporting us last year with a ten thousand dollar community grant. Um, it was well-used, we contracted a qualified arborist, um Dylan Sancher's peasant, and he um basically got three and a half months' work out of him maintaining our tracks at a baseline, and those two photos are a before and after from the work that he was doing up in Forrester Park, and we got immediate feedback from our riders that the tracks were um in excellent condition, and also meant that when we ran events like the New Zealand um National Schools Bike Championships, that we weren't running around a week or two beforehand uh doing a a half past job and tidying tracks up. Um, so I've got a more detailed report to go to Andrew Loney on that. Uh, what we see going forward is a need to maintain that funding, and we'll be applying to the new funding round to get further support. Um, we actually boosted the the contract or the service level agreement to to Dylan from Club Funds by three thousand dollars, because we saw a huge amount of value from it, um and and we're partnered to it anyway, so anything that the council basically puts into it, we effectively double its value because we support it through volunteer time and energy. So if we look at Signal Hill, um back in the nineteen ninety's, I used to ride around there on a on a relay um Hustler, which was a pretty twenty-six inch basic bike, and basically throughout two thousand ninety ninety-four to two thousand two, we we put in a whole pile of cross-country tracks, um they're very technical tracks, they're not type of thing that any man and his bike can ride. And then basically, from nineteen eighty ninety-eight through to now and continuing, we've put in an extensive downhill network. Um, that network is international in class, and it's recognized nationally, but also as international riders think it's one of the best mix of downhill courses um in the southern hemisphere, and it's something for our downhill community to be quite proud of. Back in two thousand nine, we started the Big Easy, which is basically a first stage of the Three Peaks Trail, and we're continually um upgrading that and getting it to a scale or a level which is ridable by mum, dad and the kids, and that's happening more and more often, so mum and dad drop the kids off up at the top of Signal Hill when they coast down the Big Easy to the bottom, and um and that track in itself is getting over a thousand riders a a week, plus over summer, it's even higher levels of use than that. Not only that, we work in partnership with the orienteering um group, and they utilize it for their orienteering weekends, and also um the runners and and harriers think it's one of the best tracks for training they have in Dunedin, if not the best. We've put in a four-cross, and that's basically to to have a side-by-side race environment for um competitive events that tie back to nationals' scale events. And we're also, in two thousand ten, we looked at putting in a road and a car park, so we've established a heads of agreement with council, but we also have a um easement agreement with Ministry of Education to upgrade the road access, and we're going to progress that over the next year. We actually put a bit of hold on our ideas when we're in discussion with the Sports Hub, because there were a number of opportunities there to think outside of the square, but we're going to progress that road because we we know either way we need it, and they would need it, and we'll probably look at car park development, um maybe next year or the year after. And there's a Sports Hub, so if all that links together, um from our perspective, it's a it's a great facility. Um, this is a bit of a busy timeline, but these are the events that we're running and going to run hopefully in the future, um and a lot of them are based in Dunedin, and the submission from Sport Atago earlier basically summed up, we're part of that base of the pyramid, we do a lot of stuff which isn't using the the um the stadium, but we're doing a lot of stuff around the stadium. Um, so we're heavily involved in in national level level events, we ran the New Zealand Secondary Schools, as I mentioned, last year, we had a hundred and sixty kids um come to that, the one that was run in North Island just got over two hundred and thirty, um and there was over about twenty-five percent of those competitors came from the North Island, and they raved about the Dunedin apart from the weather, because it snowed on the first day of the event. But um, long story short, we've got a number of events lined up, we're running the second South Island Secondary Schools again this year, um we have our club events like the Haggas Hunter Six Hour, and uh we're also linked to the um Three Peaks Enduro that's run in association with Bike Atago. What we're looking at doing, and and I'm at the New Zealand Cycling um AGM next weekend in Christchurch, and I'm a member of the Mountain Biking New Zealand Executive, and we've been lobbying hard to get to a point where we can put a bid in for Dunedin for the New Zealand Mountain Bike Cup or Champs, and um there's only a few places in New New Zealand can run that event, and Dunedin's one of them for a number of reasons, because we already have a national and maybe international um level courses, so those documents are coming out of Cycling New Zealand, and I'll come back to the council with some information around that once I understand what they want from us. Um, we have Naesby twelve-hour challenge, which is our fundraiser for the club, we ran it again this year, um and we had six hundred and thirty-eight people at that event in Naesby. We're watching it closely because there's been a downturn um in the, I suppose, the number of people attending those sorts of events, mainly because there's so much on, and there's so much out there in the market for people to spend their hundred and fifty dollars on each year to do an event, so we're keeping our our wits, I suppose, sharp on what's happening with those sorts of events, because the moment it comes, it's not particularly financially viable, it's it's crazy, because there's over five hundred hours of of volunteer time goes into that event to to make seventeen to twenty thousand dollars for the club. And we're heavily involved in the Atago Penance of Challenge, and that again, we've got to look closely at that uh this year through, we spent over eighty hours of volunteer time and um to support that event, fantastic day, uh you couldn't ask for a better day for it, but um regrettably, we're just not getting the numbers of those events to to kind of tick the boxes financially. So for two thousand sixteen, we're going to continue working on Signal Hill, um continue loop into those other projects like the Sports Hub, uh will apply for community funding. Um, we've pushed the envelope out with about a hundred thousand dollar application to the OCT uh for that mountain bike skills clinic. Um, there is nothing nationally that actually does a very good job of getting children to be skilled at riding mountain bikes or bikes in general, and um so that's kind of cutting-edge, and if we get funding for that, there's no reason, I already have interest from uh Bike Wanaker and a couple of other mountain bike clubs to see how this would actually be shaped, and we could roll it out for Atago quite easily, so we see it as quite an exciting opportunity. And if we don't get kids on bikes, we don't have people riding our tracks when I get twelve to ride mine. So that's at Mountain Bike um National Championships. Um, the reason why we want to get that event is Rotorua's had it for the last three years, um and you'd think the world starts and finishes as far as mountain biking is concerned in Rotorua, but we feel we could do a good job of it here, and we'd use it to raise people's awareness of what Dunedin offers, the mountain biking or wider riding um fraternity, so if we basically get that, um we've talked to the tourism group in Dunedin and warned them that we're going to be going in for a bit, but um we need to actually see financially what it offers the city, because there's a lot of money in running it and quite a lot of logistics associated with it too. One key point of our submission aside saying that we still want your support to do the stuff we do, is that we will be part of a new group in a sense applying for community funding, and we understand the council's only allocated fifty thousand dollars above and beyond as this existing funding allocations for new uh people entering that sort of funding process, and we'd be a bit worried because we're really socially connected, and there's a lot of volunteers out there that sort of scrabble around, they look at mountain biking Atago as some kind of strange group that's um financially savvy and seems to score a lot of funding or or money, but the reality is we match that and better it with everything else we do. So we'd like to know that the council's thinking about investing in Dunedin's community and maybe increasing that pool of funds um to ensure that groups like ourselves, but also other groups, get an opportunity to um effectively double the value. So just um, this was the planned detail for the upper area behind Signal Hill, um sorry, Logan Park High School, and there's a new plan associated with this development for um a Sports Hub. So we already have momentum for this project, we'll we'll put the road in, we're going through a consent process hopefully soon for that, or at least get the engineering diagrams set, so we have it all rolling, and there's an opportunity to to kind of do a really interesting development in the back of that area, that would add value to a number of sports codes, um so thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Questions, councillor Wilson?
Um, I think you've undersold yourself, and perhaps um the reason your funding has gone down, is have you any idea how much mountain bike Atago have helped other groups raise funds in the last year or five years? Because I know you supported the mayor's run along the rail trail, um, uh mountain bike Atago members, I I know that you've helped Strathari or the Middletech Moon Club, and I'm just intrigued that you don't put that in there as part of your um matching funding, because it's been incredible effort on, I know from you you guys.
Um, thanks, councillor Wilson, I I see those as things we just do, and and I I suppose um I said that to Craig Bates actually just recently, because um I got in behind the Atago Hospice um fundraiser for a number of reasons, both personal, but also because we have resources, we can throw at it quite quickly, and and I watched the mayor struggle with that ride, um, now again, but he stayed on his bike, yeah, um and like he had, it's a fantastic event to be involved in, so you get more of out of it than just supporting it. And indeed, one of our club members, Tim Clemmerson, who's the treasurer, basically fundraised as part of it as well, so we have the ability to do stuff because we're a pretty smart team, um and I say team because we've got a fantastic group of uh mountain biking savvy people that can make stuff happen, but I would add these in there if I felt that I needed to champion and champion them, but I know people know we do that, so I suppose that's my reply to you.
I know of those two, and I probably know a few others, but I don't know exactly what the other ones, and I think it would be really helpful for us to understand how strong those networks are. I don't want to add any word to you you guys, but I think you're underselling that out of this comes a heck of a lot of other fundraising, and how important that is that that we're not accounting for that in here.
In reference to our financial status, we've upgraded, um I suppose, our understanding of what events cost is, and by cost, I mean what it costs financially run event, and then also the hours that go into it from a volunteer perspective. Outside of that, my president's report, um which I think I added to the submission in the background, detailed those things that we do as part of community. Naesby's a really good example, past ten years, we've put probably a hundred thousand dollars into that community, not counting um the uh the actual people buying stuff at the pub and suchlike, we don't track that at all, and we just had an application from another volunteer nonprofit group for funding from us as a as a group, and we went, they just wanted a printer, and we said, yeah, cool, we'll buy your printer, so so we're doing that sort of stuff in the background, but it's kind of odd, we're nonprofit volunteer organization, funding nonprofit, so yeah, there's something in there. Um, just a side comment, I'd like to support Sport Atago with their submission, we've been involved in those discussions, uh we seem to be in the periphery of everything that happens in Logan Park, but we actually influence it quite heavily, and um I think a facility strategy would help us as a minority sport to kind of be more visible to, so that'd be one thing.
Councillor Lord.
I know it's a question time, but I'm going to make a statement, look, I just was blown away last year by the work you guys do, and I had no idea the the breadth of work you've done, and I just want to commend you, and I'm blown away again today, and the only part I would say is that I'd be very surprised if Craig Bates at work.
Yeah, the lucky thing, both Craig and I, well, Craig's not self-employed, I am, but yeah, but um no, Craig Bates spends too much time on this as well.
Further questions, councillors?
I've just got one, and that's in relation to the um cup, uh seems like the turnaround will be pretty quick, is that right? Yeah, so when are you likely to hear from?
Thank you, councillor McTavish, knowing Cycling New Zealand will hear about it two months out from when they want it, but because I'm involved in that network, I've been putting the foundation in place anyway. What I can't talk about is that there's been a big strategy through Mountain Biking New Zealand to realign the way we do all our events, and there's a lot going to happen in the south next year, and there's a lot going to happen in Atago, and and Queenstown is hopefully going to be in the running to put a bid in for Oceania's and um and also other cup events, so we're trying to get it lined up, the surety for clubs like ourselves, because there's a huge amount of effort goes into it, and maybe not that much gain really. Financially, those events never really make any money, you do them for the sport.
Are you guys connected in with Tammy and our events team, and just in terms of the funding rounds and, yeah?
Yep, yeah, yeah, and like I've already had that discussion, warning them that we'll be leaving through the door at some point.
Yeah.
Councillor Wilson, did you have another? Right, okay, that looks like all the questions, thank you very much, Chris. Very inspiring, actually, I think's the word.